It took a hammer in Canoe Beach, but it held its own, which was good.
Ready? Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of September 21st, 2017. I ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, to the United States of America, and to the people of this nation, God, and to the people of Liberty and Justice for all.
Okay, opening comments, Mr. Lombard.
Where'd he go? Hello? I waited for him. Are you ready?
Yeah, they're ready.
What time is this assessors meeting?
7:30.
When I hold my minutes, my comments, til after the assessors will run through the assessors.
Okay.
Why don't you come right up here, sit right here, please? We got everything ready this time?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I do have the newspaper.
You do.
Posting, sorry, I needed it to make sure it was uploaded, so you can read it into the minutes.
Want to read that into the minutes?
It's the same as on the front there.
I'm sorry, it's so little.
Are you ready?
Okay, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Thursday, September 21st, 2017, at 7:30 PM in the Town Hall, 334 Nahat Road, Nahat, Mass., on the issue of tax classification. Purpose of the hearing is to allow taxpayers the opportunity to present their views on whether or not residential, commercial, industrial, open space, and personal property should be taxed with one rate for all property classes, or to be used different taxes for different classes of property. The hearing will include a presentation by the Board of Assessors. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Board of Selectmen shall determine whether or not one tax rate should be applied for the fiscal year of 2018 tax rate. Currently, the town taxes at a single tax title, a tax rate for property classes. In addition, the Board of Selectmen will determine whether or not to allow exemptions for concerned taxpayers, are encouraged, or small commercial businesses, and our owner-occupied residential properties. All concerned taxpayers are encouraged to attend, to present their vote, their views orally or in writing. If there are any questions about the hearing, please contact Sheila Hamilton in the Assessor's office at 781-581-0212. Francis Burrow, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. And I'll have my glasses updated. Boy.
Posted 9/18/17, Town Hall in Nahat.org, item 9/1917.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Sheila?
Well, deja vu.
Right.
Just again, we usually, status quo, have a tax factor of one, and that's due to the percent of the residential versus the commercial, industrial, and personal property. It doesn't really make sense to burden the CIP when they only carry three and a half percent of the percentage of our properties. And then we don't really have enough small commercial businesses to warrant that kind of an exemption, and the residential exemption. Everyone is owner-occupied, we're not a summer residence like we used to be years ago.
Okay, thank you. This was done a week ago for people that didn't realize it, but there was a small glitch in the system, so we're just redoing the whole.
Right, right. The other thing is, is the excess levy capacity has been calculated and has not changed, and that is $8,379.72. So you need to be notified of that. The other thing different from last week is I have not only the recap for you to sign the LA5 tax classification allocation sheet, but also a letter to the Department of Revenue that states the water and sewer debt shifted for the fiscal year 18 levy of $239,805. So I will need these signed also.
Okay. We don't have, we already voted to have the water and sewer rate have reversed last week. That went through okay today.
Yep, all you're doing is voting the two votes that you have here tonight.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve a residential factor of one and not adopt a residential exemption or small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2018, and that the LA5 excess capacity for the current fiscal year is calculated as $8,379.72. Sheila?
Eighty-four.
All right, eighty-four.
I'll sign the motion.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the Assistant Assessor to electronically sign the LA5 form for submission to the DOR for purposes of setting the fiscal year 2018 tax rate, and that the form with our original signatures will be maintained on file.
Second. Okay, discussion, hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
And then I just wanted to mention again, the real estate abatement, applications for overvaluation. They are due by November 1st. We're hoping to have the tax bills mailed and out into the taxpayers by October 1st, you know, to be on time. The other thing is the exemptions, that individuals who might be eligible for an exemption. I'm holding a workshop in the Tiffany Room on November the 7th at 7:00 PM. I might have to hold another one also, but probably not till February or March. The due date of the applications have been extended to April 1st.
This is for any residential exemption?
It's, no, it's for a personal exemption.
Oh, okay.
You know, a property owner who would be, maybe elderly, could be blind, there are veterans. There's also the CPA exemption.
Okay.
Yep, and the veterans, absolutely, because we have a lot of those. And I'm going to be putting in a notice to the daily item that just describes the recertification program and the impact it has on the tax taxes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
We need a vote to...
Thank you, Board of Assessors.
That's it, I got two votes.
Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you, Sheila. Okay. Do you want to go to the opening comments?
Please.
You? Okay, Richie, opening comments.
Jeff, you know, I asked for the warrants and payroll, never expecting that you would make three copies. I imagine these are all three copies?
Correct.
One would have been sufficient for us to review. I just think, just a waste of paper, and, you know, this is quite, I mean, this is like over the top again. What I'd like to have you do is kind of recap this, and, from July 1st going forward. And do it by, you know, you can put a spreadsheet together of all employees and just put it, you know, the payment in over two weeks, so we can see that, just kind of a recap. What I was looking for into the warrants, we asked the fire chief to have training for ocean rescue during the winter months. We've asked for that, I guess, for a year, maybe two, a year and a half. He finally, you know, he's got the training done, but again, he did it in July, which is really not conducive to open the winter season. But I would think the fire chief, and RU, combination of them, would give the Board of Selectmen a recap of that training, the cost involved in it. Here it is, he had the training in July, and this is September, and there's no report to the Board of Selectmen on saying that he completed this training, the cost involved, who took the training, percentage of the firemen, when he took the training, and things like that. I would think that he, and you, would have a report to the Board saying, "This has been completed." Whether it's, you know, he did it in July, which is, I would prefer in January, so you get the element, but, of course, that whole, that whole thing is involved with another problem, but I really am looking for the report from the fire chief on a recap of that training exercise, and the cost involved with that, and I was, that's what I was looking for through the warrants, and I don't see it in here. I don't know when he paid, I have no idea how much that cost.
Certainly, yeah.
Where the money came from, that would raise questions with his budget. And the Finance Committee probably is going to ask the same question, where'd the money come from? I mean, where did he get all the money to pay for that exercise without coming to us and asking for RU for reserve fund transfer to pay for it?
In the budget, there's an ocean training budget, and so that's where that comes from. So he has enough funding to do his training throughout the year. Addressing the issue of July, he had attempted to try a winter training, but you, the Selectmen, had decided that that was unsafe and did not want to see that, so...
Who said it was, Selectmen said it was unsafe?
Yep, yep.
Where did that come from?
From this board.
From this board?
Yep.
I don't remember that, I don't, I don't know where the, I like to see that. The Board voted that it was unsafe to have it in January? How do we remember that vote? Do you remember that vote, Mr. Jim?
I can certainly bring it up.
Well, I just, it's, again, it seems like, you know, here again, I don't believe, I don't, you know, my memory might be serving, but I don't, I don't think that we asked him to have training, co- winter rescue. We asked two things, to get the troops trained and the equipment. We can't be sending out a jet ski or a Kodiak, Zodiac boat in high winds and high surf. They need equipment for this, and I never remember giving dates of sequence of when he should have that training. I would never, I don't believe I would say that. I would assume, I assume wrong again, that he had that in the middle of July, where the water's warmer and it's calmer, and I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, and then...
Again, I think it was against his better judgment. He wanted to have it in the colder months, however, and I'll draw that up out of the minutes. And then also, when it comes to the report, the reports aren't customary, we're more than happy to provide them, it's just a matter of which ones you want to see.
No, no, this is a simple question. This is a very simple, you know, there's a simple response.
Yep.
Very simple, we haven't done the report yet, we owe you the Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen a report, don't you think?
As I said, they're not, they're not customary, but we're certainly glad to provide it.
What do you mean it's not customary? We've been asking for training for the fire department. Now he's done this training, and wouldn't you think, you know, you would send us a report back and saying, "Yes, we did, you know, we asked, we did exactly to your wishes"?
If it were customary, yes, but it's not customary. So we're more than happy to, though.
It's not customary.
Yeah, it's not customary.
So we got to make sure that everything is pinpoint, direct with you and the fire chief.
No, all you have to do is request.
Wait, 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 let me finish. I started looking through this warrant and everything, and I can't find it in this warrant. And this is like over the top. When you mentioned you wanted to bury me with paperwork, this is not, I hope you didn't make, have to need to make three copies, one for each member of the Board, because I think that's just over the top. We don't need that. We can share one copy and go through it, but I'd rather have you recap this.
Certainly.
And put a, you know, who's getting paid, who, I'd like to see it, because, you know, in the warrants, you mentioned that we need to see the weekly warrants, like, in the past, the Board of Selectmen signed those. No, no, I know your answer...
Well, that would have been in excess of 29 years ago. Which you're the only citizen.
But I want to see it, I like to see the weekly warrants, so we can review it on the, every two weeks, every two weeks the warrant. We haven't gone to a two-week payroll, so it's every week, so you'd have two weeks every, every time we meet.
Yeah, I can provide you the executed warrants.
Okay. Now, are you going to get that report, and the fire chief written it up?
Well, sure. Now that I understand that you want one, I can certainly get that written up.
I just don't understand why you'd not take the initiative to do that.
Because, again, it's not customary.
It's not customary.
It's not customary.
So it's like we don't exist. We asked for the training, we're trying to get equipment for him, and now all of a sudden, we don't, we don't exist for the report? Is that what you're saying? Are you saying that to me?
Oh, no, not at all. What I'm saying is that we usually provide reports when they're requested, and rarely will we see a report coming to the Selectmen unrequested. That's all we're saying. And I could certainly get the chief to bring that together, and he can have it for the next meeting. And I can also do a summary of the payroll.
Maybe, is the, we scheduled the executive session for next Wednesday night, is that on?
That's on.
It's on with the fire chief and you, and the legal teams and all that? It's all set to go at...
That's all set to go.
What time, 6:30?
6:30.
6:30?
6:30, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have a meeting that night, so if you go on for a while...
And he wants the, an executive session, he's got to respond to you on the executive session.
He does want the executive session, yes.
Oh, he doesn't want an open meeting?
No, he doesn't want an open meeting.
Oh, okay. Would you make sure to respond back to us, telling us that?
Certainly.
Just have him send me an email.
Certainly.
Okay.
He's on holiday right now, so...
That's fine.
Yeah, he'll respond when he comes back Monday.
And I asked also a copy of the vacation schedules, and, is that in here?
No, that's under there, that's coming at your next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yep.
Why's it taking so long? It's been a week.
It's been a week, yes. Customarily, we have two weeks, so this is a backup of meetings, so it's only been a week. I'm pulling together the information.
I can see how you could fall behind, and you give the staff out here to make copies all day. I hope you'd have them make the copies, or take it to Sir Speedy or something. This is, this is really, this is unbelievable.
In the future, if you could be more specific, that would really help, and then I'll just make copies as you would like to see them.
Well, I think if you're in doubt or something, or in question, why don't you pick up a phone and call me, or send me an email? You send an email about everything else, but this, you know, this is like...
Well, we talk daily, so, but it's certainly something that we can speak to, but again, you asked for the warrants, so you got the warrants. That's all.
I have an email right here from me, and I simply just said, "Jeff, our warrants should be given to us starting with this meeting to be signed by the Board." These are, those are vouchers. I don't, we didn't, I don't think we asked for vouchers, I think we asked for warrants.
Warrants to be signed. The signature process is called out in the Town Administrator Act, and it says that I shall, so it mandates my signature.
You're absolutely correct about that.
I am.
But in order to work with the Board, and to have a little cooperation between the Board of Selectmen, by the way, did you know that we're voted in by the people?
I'm aware of that.
We represent the people.
I'm aware of that.
You're aware of that? And if we asked you for something and trying to work with us, you seem to be, I don't have, I'm, it's Town Administrator Act, which we've got a committee here studying that. I mean, it's like, it's like pulling teeth around here, and it's like, I really don't appreciate it. I asked for the vacation schedule, and of course, it doesn't, how long does it take to take a vacation schedule? I mean, to print out a vacation schedule?
Two weeks.
Do they submit the vacation schedule to you?
No, they don't. It's just that the Department heads.
The Department heads don't have vacation schedules with you?
They do.
They do?
They do.
What, do you have copy? You must, that's all we need is a copy of that.
I get emails as to when they're taking vacation time.
No, 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 I... I want to know when they're not available. It just seems like, you know, like, is the Department heads on vacation this week?
There are trainings going on, but no, well, we've got the holiday, for the Jewish holiday, and that's, that's a vacation, I guess.
Is that considered vacation?
It's considered a holiday, but it's time away, so it depends on how you classify it.
It's vacation, it's vacation.
Well, it's, it's a holiday. Holidays are treated differently in earned time.
Holidays.
Yep. It's like Christmas, that's not a vacation.
So how many, let me ask you this question, this Department head, is he out for three days, four days?
He is out for three days, that's the length of the holiday.
Three days?
Yep.
So he's not charged vacation?
He is provided a holiday, and...
Okay, how many holidays do the Department heads get? One, two?
Eleven.
I thought we got the, you know, I'm not, I saw...
Do you want a summary, do you want a summary of the benefits? I could certainly provide that.
I went through all that, I saw the holidays listed, I didn't see the Jewish holidays listed under the employment handbook, I was going through that, when you gave that to me last week when I asked for it. Is that, that's, so that's not included? We should include the Jewish holidays in there for all the participants.
We take consideration of the Jewish holidays, so if we have a Jewish member of our personnel, we provide them the holiday, much as we do for Christmas.
Well, we should make a notation of that in the personnel handbook, if that's, you know, that's fine.
Yeah, no.
I have no problem with people taking religious holidays. But I would think, you know, the report, especially this report on the fire chief holding the exercise, okay? Let me ask you, I want to ask you specific questions. I want to know how many days he was there attending that? How much time he spent each day training that? Because when I went up to see the training, I didn't see the fire chief at all. The training, I saw the actual training at Forty Steps.
So are you interested in the training or the fire chief?
Acting as the fire chief, supervising the training.
Well, the training is done by a trainer, and so the, the training is actually a training process, and the fire chief does participate, but he's not the key participant, it's the trainer.
I can't understand that.
Maybe we can talk offline, we'll, I'll call you tomorrow and we can chat about this.
No, don't, don't call me, please don't call me. You claimed a few things that I said over the phone, you on your call, have you talked to the other Board, talk to the other two members?
We have a new process with the Chairman where I have to make arrangements in advance, and I've been unsuccessful in that.
I feel the Chairman has, has been, legal matters that you've initiated toward the Chairman, and I, and I don't appreciate that.
Would you like to clarify?
I'm sorry?
Would you like to clarify?
No, I won't go into it now. Take the time. I'm off on this with my comments.
Okay, Mike Tarrant?
Yes. I forego my comments, because I'd like to hear from the Town Administrator Act Study Committee, they can have my minutes. I just want to mention one thing, we lost a real dear friend this, this week, Dan Kane. He was, you know, I just really met, I've always known Dan, but I really got to meet him this past couple of years, and he was just the salt of the earth, he was just a wonderful man. He shared a lot of good, you know, thoughts together with both, you know, love cars, so, and so don't I, loved the muscle cars, and so don't I. And he was on the golf committee, and he did an awful lot for the town, he just was really a great guy, and, you know, of course, there's Holly, Dan, and Diane, and Linda, we're all going to meet, you know, and Sue, his wife Sue, we sent our condolences to them. So, again, I'm just going to miss him, he's just, he was a great guy. That's it.
I'd like to have the flags flown at Half Mass in memory of Dan Kane tomorrow. Please.
Please.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the Citizens Forum. Anybody here, any citizens here that want to speak? Okay, I don't see any. Yes, we have to approve the minutes. This, the only problem I have with this, Jeff, is this. They've blocked out half, part of the minutes.
Oh, yeah. But you, you have a copy sent to you?
I actually have a copy that was emailed to me, and they, they were... Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of September 9/14 and 16, 17 minutes.
I so moved that, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. So, we're going to go right, there's no citizens here, the Citizens Forum, so we're going to go right into the Town Administrator Act Committee, the updated report. Okay. Okay, Charter by Law Study Committee. All right, but could that perhaps, if someone sits there, be explained? Because you can't hear it.
Sure.
Yeah, so, can we, when we have you, somebody come up, I'd have them come up here and talk over the microphone. That microphone there tends to put a lot of feedback out, so... Come up. Who's going to come up and speak?
Come up, Steven.
Steven, okay.
Sit right next to us here, Steven.
Yeah. I have a loud voice, but the microphone may not be necessary. It's sort of a feedback, let us push that back.
Well, that one there is terrible.
Mr. Druckus?
We also have Chris Druckus here from the legal team.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen. Jim Ward and Carol Nelson are here with me tonight, we're serving on the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee, known as, previously Mike Quigley was a member of the committee. Since our appointment, we have met on, on many occasions during the course of those meetings, and in preparation for those meetings, we've had the opportunity to review a number of relevant documents, including first and foremost, the Enabling Act for the Town Administrator's Position, the Town Charter, the Town Bylaw, the Town Administrator's Contract, recommendations that came about as a result of view of financial operations for the town. We had a great, comprehensive presentation by Town Council as to what the procedure and timeframes would be, if any of our recommendations were to make amendments to any one of those bodies of law. And so we've come a long way. We've had the assistance of Attorney Druckus, which has been tremendous, given his experience not just in this area of law, but also his personal experience on a Board of Selectmen and serving on other charter-related issues. We've been invited here tonight by the Board of Selectmen, I think your timing is excellent. We're at a point, we haven't made any recommendations, but there's certainly areas of interest that we're looking at, and attempted to give you a bold list of those in anticipation of tonight's meeting, to seek input from the Board of Selectmen this evening, or, or going forward from this evening's meeting, and we hope to have a similar type of meeting with the Town Administrator, to hear what his opinions are on similar types of issues. So we can go through those on the list, if it's the Board's wishes, or we can just, you know, hear what the Board has to say in terms of what they feel might be necessary as we review the Act, as we make a determination of whether issues related to the Charter need to be resolved. as we make a determination of whether issues related to the Charter need to be resolved, any other related matters.
Aye, Richie. Tea?
Well, I think it's excellent that you've...in the process of studying this, because you can see the problems we're having. The Town Administrator thinks that he doesn't need the Board of Selectmen, and he just...the Board of Selectmen, of course, are the elected body from the townspeople. And as I said earlier, we represent the people of the town because we're an elected board, and we should oversee and partner with the Town Administrator. In my thirty-seven years of the Board of Selectmen, I have never seen anything so flagrant. And it's always high drama, and we're always...and you hear the Town Administrator tonight, you heard it tonight, that he's following the Town Administrator Act to the T, and he doesn't really need the Board of Selectmen. He's just said that on many occasions, and he doesn't need to adhere to the Board of Selectmen's wishes or anything, or guidance, or approvals, or anything. So that's what I'm looking for. We need to change that. And I think what...I'm going to ask the Board tonight for a special town meeting, and there's a couple articles we've already...we've got a sewer thing we've got to get resolved and worked on. And hopefully, I have the special town meeting either in November or in December, and if you could get ready for that meeting so that we could...then we'll put everything back into the April Town and the Annual Town Meeting. Same with the sewer project and the sewer problem that we're having, because we've got to address that issue right away. I'm not going to wait till we have another major break. It costs us millions of dollars without...we've got to...we've got to assume that we've got another break coming. And that pipe is old, so that's got to be the top priority in that special town meeting, along with the firehouse. We've got to get a new firehouse because we had the initiative of a new...one of our firemen, again, get a brand-new engine and associate equipment for about a million five. He wrote the grant, and this is the second grant that he's got approval for, two fire engines. It's well over two and a half million, almost two point seven million dollars. And this individual is just fantastic, but we've got to make sure that the new fire engine won't fit in the firehouse, so we've got to get that redesigned. So that's the reason why I'm going to call for a special town meeting. I'm not sure if you'll be ready for that, and then the process from a special town meeting to the annual town meeting and what we have to do and how we have to process and what articles we need to put in and not put in and move that way. That's what I'm thinking without...I'm speaking out loud. I haven't got a vote of the Board yet, but that's what I like to see because we've got to change the Town Administrative Act and to have the authority and approval of the Board of Selectmen. We don't need the ultimate responsibility, but we do need...we need the Town Administrator to work with the Board of Selectmen. And on certain issues, the approval of the Board of Selectmen would be warranted because they're the ultimate responsibility to the townspeople. The townspeople, the jury, we're just representing them. And if we can't work with the Town Administrator, the current Town Manager, because we're just going back and forth, it's argumenting, it's getting very painful, it's getting very...just a...it's a log-on procedure every time we turn around. Tonight, for a purpose, you heard it tonight, and it's just over the top, and I've just...I've never seen it. We've never had this problem. And to be...everything we turn around and there's a problem. Always seems to be problems and drama. And it's just...it's just...I've had enough. That's why we started this committee, because we've got someone that wants to control everything. And the emails, you know, it's like a triple-A personality, and he just...he fails to work...this individual fails to work with the Board. And he just...he makes decisions that are not favorable to the townspeople. So that's my input, okay, on this whole problem. And it come to light, and then when we found out the Town Administrator Act that was written up and approved and everything, was incorrectly written. Am I correct? It was incorrectly written for the sake of sharing power, or whatever you want to call it, you know. I don't think the Board of Selectmen, not the word "power," it's just sharing an approval of priority going forward.
In that regard, one of the gray areas that we've struggled with is there's at least six occasions in the Act where the actions of the Town Administrator are subject to or require the approval of the Board. But the procedure for gaining that approval, other than I think in Section Nine with respect to the hiring of certain personnel, isn't defined anywhere. And so some of the input that might be important to us to hear from the Board of Selectmen is if you had some sense as to what that procedure might be, so you'd know what it was, and in turn, a Town Administrator would know what his expectations were, and you could be able to determine whether someone was in compliance or not. But where it's gray, it's always going to be subject to interpretation or someone's management style as to how they go forward.
Can you give us a...do you give us those questions, you know, to us, what you think is the gray area?
Certainly can.
Tea?
May I?
Yeah.
Good. The Town Charter, Steve, is that supposed to be periodically reviewed and rewritten, looked at?
The statute authorizing the Town Charters recommends their review on a ten-year basis. The House Charter was adopted in nineteen eighty. There was an amendment, actually, there were two amendments, I'll come to find out, in nineteen eighty-six, having to do with the appointment versus election of the collective treasurer's position, and then later in two thousand and two regarding the number of members who would be serving on the school committee. But other than that, to my knowledge, there hasn't been a comprehensive review of the Charter by the town or by a charter commission. And in looking through some of the documentation for background and foundation, there was the opinions of Attorney Drukus and Attorney Ritchie, and there were maybe some differences of opinion, but an area of commonality was that the Charter needs to be looked at. For example, there's not a single reference in the Town Charter, position of the Town Administrator.
Right, right.
Maybe there needs to be, and certainly there will be other areas as well. And so the consideration of a charter commission to review the Town Charter going forward, it's a lengthy process, a one-and-a-half, two-year process, but you need to start somewhere.
Right.
And that would certainly be, I think, as a consensus, one of our recommendations.
Since nineteen eighty, this has not been looked at?
Other than in two limited areas of scope.
Ninety, two thousand and ten.
Thirty-seven.
Should have been reviewed at least three times.
Recommendation would be for three going on four.
Three going on four. I...my opinion is we should start there and somehow incorporate, like you said, Town Administrator stuff, for lack of a better word, in the Town Charter, revise it. But like you said, it's a two-year project, year and a half, two-year project, so...
Which takes two consecutive years to approve.
Two consecutive town meetings, right?
A town meeting, and I would defer to Town Council, at my general understanding, to be a town meeting as to whether or not there's going to be a charter commission, to elect a charter commission, and then their...whatever their conclusions or recommendations were would have to go to a town meeting and another separate town meeting at some future point.
Oh, okay.
Well, you guys are considered a charter commission. Well...
We're an advisory committee, but not a charter commission.
A charter study committee, okay. You're not a charter commission.
That'd be an elected board through...
My feeling on the whole thing is, and I know that we had this looked at a year ago, so they did say that the Charter, the special act should be incorporated into the Charter somehow, and I think that's what they did in Swanscott, I believe, right, Chris? There are discrepancies. It's all interpretation. I interpret it differently. I interpret it that, you know, the Board of Selectmen have most of the responsibility, and that the Town Administrator, a Town Administrator by definition is somebody that administrates what the Board of Selectmen wants. Town managers, however, are different. We don't have a town manager or not. We have a Town Administrator. And there's a big difference. The Board of Selectmen has more responsibility with the administrator, and that's what we have here. And personally, I think Richie's right, you know, we do need to...we need to have more workability with the administrator with us so we don't get blindsided or we don't have these problems. And those gray areas, that's what Chris had pointed out, and Mr. Ritchie, because...and they disagreed on a few things, but the one thing they did agree with was that the Act was kind of a disaster, and it needed to be worked on, so...
Well, there's some inconsistencies with the Act and some of the other bodies of law that guide the town. There's certainly some areas that are gray areas, that are the, you know... The approval of the Selectmen is one of them. There's other areas. We talked about reports of the Board of Selectmen. I don't really get into what those reports are going to be, or what the procedure is going to be for presenting them, reviewing them, approving them if necessary. There's those areas, and certainly there's the areas that Chairman Slomberg has brought up tonight with regard to what the degree of authority that's going to lie solely within the Town Administrator's position, whether it's going to stand as it is, or whether or not there needs to be some other type of oversight or authority of the Selectmen. In summary, you see, I'll just give some phrases that I've written down from various sources. Carry out the direction of the Board of Selectmen, serve as the Selectmen's liaison, implement Board policy, whether there's certain areas of the Town Administrator Act that need to be slanted in that direction to give the Board more authority. And that's...we'd like to hear from the Board whether they feel the same way. Similarly, we'd like to hear from the Town Administrator in his day-to-day management capacity, his view of that, so we can make some objective recommendations at the appropriate time. As far as the time, I can only speak for myself, and it's certainly something we can bring up the next meeting. I work better with deadlines. You know, this is something that might go on forever, given the scope of what we're under, but we can certainly bring up our next meeting, whether or not these November, December dates are feasible for all of us to devote the time that's needed to get something together.
So do you want to meet with us at one of your meetings, all three of us?
Well, I think we need to meet, again, as a group in terms of timeframe, and we also have to see what the Town Administrator's availability is going to be to hear from him. But it's just food for thought, and again, the outline that was provided to you earlier is kind of seeds for things that...areas that we'd like to have some input, and certainly there might be others that are, you know, unique to the Board's perspective we'd like to hear.
My opinion on that is that you take as much time as you need. I don't see a special town meeting in November, December. I see that as pushing you. This is so important that, you know, you take as much time as you need. I'd rather have meetings like this, and then we can build. My immediate reaction is, okay, this is great, but now what do we do?
Well...
What do we do between now and next town meeting, say? I mean, that's the stuff we have to talk about as a Board.
Well, I think we all need to meet together to remedy the gray areas.
Yeah, that's what I'm...I put down gray areas because there are gray areas.
And then present it at a town meeting, because it's a charter change, so we have to present it at a town meeting.
Well, I...to me, you know, I think phase one is to get it on the record as a special town meeting so that we can get the Charter Commission going and also rewrite the Town Administrator's Act. It's a combination. It's two separate things here, and move forward. This is what, middle of September, we could wait till January, but I want to see if we can get everything in line, and I'll give you a deadline and say, okay, this is what we're looking at. This doesn't have to be cast in stone, and then have it submitted to the Annual Town Meeting. Because we're having a hell of a time here. This is stressful. This is not only stressful. I've had seventeen years with Mark Cullen, and we've never had a problem such as this over the Town Administrator's report or anything like that. Mark Cullen, he handled everything, advised us, told us what he was going to do beforehand, who he was going to appoint, not appoint, what contract he was going to sign, asked for our input. We've got an individual that he says he doesn't need the Board of Selectmen. And it's getting very stressful since we let it go for a year and a half. Seventeen years with Mark Cullen, and we never had a problem like this. Now, all of a sudden, I've got an individual writing emails like coming out the gauze, sending documentation we would think that this is absolute escher. To give me a report like this, sit down. I get paid a dollar. And I'm up here going through this warrant and asking for reports, and you heard his answer. "Oh, I didn't know you wanted a report." Hello? I mean, this is what we're fighting. It's every week, it's the same thing. It's like, it's like, I'm not going to do it because I'm the Town Administrator and I'm going to go by the Town Administrator's Act. And he doesn't have...he doesn't need the Board of Selectmen. He could care less what we vote, not vote. The chairman has put initiatives on the table. Could care less. Contracts that are being signed, hiring attorneys, hiring consultants without, you know, money, and it's like, what the hell is going on? And the townspeople don't know what's going on. Up here, they just heard this. Now we've got a whole department up in arms. And now we've got to have agreements to hear that whole problem coming up, which is very, very... I mean, it's one of our major departments. And it's like getting...it's like, here we go again. Grievances after grievances. I just saw a grievance in here. It's been approved. Of course, it's all denied. He hires his law firms, you know, and they're from State Street, high-priced firms. These are not firms. In order for us to count, I mean, it's like, you know... He advises to get rid of Charlie Riley, and then he hired this temp of food, which is Dan is a good guy, but his law firm had four or five lawyers, and the firm was supposed to handle different phases in a small town, whether it be personnel legal, legal, you know, Board of Appeals, things like that. And I...we bought into it, and now we find out he's gone out and hired a special labor council to his benefit. And all the opinions coming down that are written by his legal team is to the negative, is to his affirmative, has always favors him. Every one of the opinions, not the Board of Selectmen. And I'm saying, you know, then we've got to go out and we hired a law firm, and it's like, it's like, I've never gone through this. So, Mr. Tea?
I would like to see, at some point, my opinion here, that your By Law Review Committee, Charter by Law Review Committee... One of the things you say is that we need a new Charter Commission, and we need a new Charter Commission to have the Town Administrator Act, parts of it brought in. And I don't know if I'm pushing it here, but if you could come up with what you would think should be put in there, or if that's way beyond you. But if that takes time, it takes time, and that goes to a recommendation at the next town meeting that this Charter Committee be put together to study both the Town Administrator Act and the Town Charter, which hasn't been touched since it's been written.
Well, I think what you might be able to expect from the Study Committee is a recommendation...
A recommendation, yeah, right.
...of the Charter, and perhaps certain areas that would be included in that review, but it's really going to be up to the Charter Commission that's elected as to whether or not they're going to pick up on those recommendations and certainly identify other areas that need to be refined.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I think it was the report that we got from Division of Local Services that had said to incorporate the...the Act shouldn't be outside the scope of the Charter, it should be in it.
Well, how did the Department of Revenue miss the fact that the Charter has not been looked at since nineteen eighty?
I think they pointed that out. I think they, in their report. It was before you...
Okay, if they pointed it out, how come it was nineteen eighty and still hasn't been worked on?
I don't know. I don't know.
See, I would like to have a special town meeting so that by that time, whatever, we've got eight weeks, ten weeks, twelve weeks, to give us a recommendation in margin order going forward. And what we have to do, once we get that in the special town meeting, then the Charter Committee, part of that, and then we'll have it voted at the town meeting so that we're prepared. We're preparing everything for the Annual Town Meeting, whatever... Whatever documentation and recommendation your committee, and legal things that we can put in going forward, so we're prepared for the April town meeting. That would be, you know, and then, this way here, we know exactly what to put in there, the wording of the articles, and the team, and what we have to do. And, and I think you mentioned deadlines, I think, you know, you, you, you like deadlines. And I'm just saying, this way here, because I, I, we've got to have, we've got the Superintendent of Public Works here tonight, and we've got a plan from him, and I, and I like his plan and recommendation, but we've also got another problem with the fire station too, so we need to get that, those two, you know, ready to go. And I just think that your input into that special town meeting would be, would be excellent, okay? And just give us the recommendation, how you would lay it out, the actual warrant articles that you would submit, if you were the board of selectmen, so to speak, on both the Town Administrator Act, those recommendations, and, and the charter, which is, it's fine, but we, you know, but I'm more interested in the Town Administrator's Act, getting that squared away, and give some, some real clear-cut direction in that Town Administrator's Act, so that the board of selectmen, future selectmen, are not tied, tied up into all this, this drama. And I use the word drama, because that's what it is.
Well, I think that, I don't think we need to have a special town meeting for that per se, though. I think we just need to have regular selectmen's meetings with them, to put that together, Richie. I mean, that, I mean, a special town meeting, then you're going to have a million people up here talking about it. I mean, if, if we talk about this with the charter study committee, and then put something together.
Well, you're going to have a special town meeting. I hope you're going to pass the special town meeting for the Superintendent of Public Works, his recommendation.
Well, let's, let's see what they have to say.
No, I understand, okay? And then, we need a new fire.
Well, we, we have, they're not here tonight, so we have to hear what they have to say too.
Well, I, I, again, I, I know they're not here, but I know they've got a brand-new fire engine coming, free to the town.
I know.
And, and, and they've got no place to put it.
Right.
And we've got to rebuild the fire engine, so we know that.
Right.
We know that going in. So we put a, a space in, in the special town meeting for an article, and then they can, they have time to, right up, get the architect and get, get it going. I mean, that's, you know, we, we can, the first week in December, and this gives us almost, what is that, October, November, almost twelve weeks, to, to, to get this all done. So I, I, I don't know, that's, I don't know. What, what do you think, Steve, is that?
I'm, I can only speak for myself. I, I think that'd be a good topic for discussion at a next meeting.
Okay, good, good.
At a.
And we can meet, we can meet.
At a selectmen's meeting.
Well, next meeting of, of our committee.
Yeah.
We should meet with you guys at Yum Gear, downstairs.
Sure.
You know, it's public, so.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
Listen, the question, you know, like, that's it, but the full side of what I'm saying, whether they will, or is he not?
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to.
You got the, whether this is a question, who's that, and then for us?
Yep.
Whether that's, if, if.
Right. Well, have a.
We need the, we need the, we need the.
When can we meet with you guys next?
You have to, you have to.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Well, first of all, no one could hear that out there.
Right. So Jimmy, Jimmy Ward has just asked us to, he's on the committee too, and he's asked us to meet with them, because they have a list of questions for us, and, and the town administrator also, to find out where, you know, what they, what we should do. So I'm game for it, I'm game to.
I'm ready to be with you, but I, I, I'm going to tell you right now what I want. There's a difference, legal opinion, between the Town Administrator's Act and the understanding of that town administrator from the current town administrator and the board of selectmen, okay? There's a gray area in that, and we need to get that straightened out. We need to strengthen the, the board of selectmen into, they have, you know, like final say or recommend, there's three members here, voted to the townspeople. We can't have one individual taking, I'm going to do what I want, what I want, because I'm the town administrator, and I'm going to follow the Town Administrator's Act. You heard the council right here, that he says there's areas here where he has to work with the board, and the board has to, it's not happening, Jimmy. This board has, has been, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, you guys jump in this.
No, I, I, I believe you're right.
You know, and I, I've got, I've got a chairman that is, is in the process of being, you know, they're not communicating. I'm the only one that, that the town administrator calls on the phone. Is there something wrong with that? He's the only one that gets me, I answer the phone, I, I could, you know, and, you know, it's like, it's like one thing after another. They don't talk. Two members of the board of selectmen are not talking to the town administrator, the town administrator's not talking to them. I, you know, and, and how long can this go on?
Until we get his approval.
Absolutely. Until he say, until he gets the message that he's going to work with us.
So we'll.
The charter is still in June next year.
That's correct.
So it's going on until this end.
Well.
The exchange is straight.
No, but again, it's all interpret, see, to me, it's all interpretation, and I interpret it differently, and, and, you know, and Richie interprets it differently, and I'm sure Teague interprets it differently. I, I interpret it that we have a little, again, we have a town administrator, we don't have a town manager, so, and there's a big difference.
The Town Administrator's Act, then you signed a contract for, if you have full reign under that act, is what he's going by actually, for most actions.
With the approval of the board of selectmen.
Well, not, not.
On some areas, not on others.
Right.
You know, you know, it, he says, like, act, the act has to be changed, or the act has to be incorporated into charter, with the charter re-.
I know.
I mean, and even that stuff, that a lot of the importance adds to the gray areas and whatever.
Right.
So this, you know, we can leave the ideas and that type of stuff, but, you know, with three people, and you're asking us to make the town's decision, as to what?
No, 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 we're not asking you to make decisions.
You're asking us to, like, do the job, but not the job.
You've got two attorneys on your board, and they, one of them wrote the Town Administrator's Act for the town of Swansky, who's sitting in front of us.
He's not available.
No, 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 but he's, he, he, he's, he's in, he's to advise you, okay? And you've got Steve Smith, who's been in the town a long time, and he could.
Carol, right.
And Ca, and, no, and Carol, yeah. But you, I don't think this is the first time you've heard this discussion, and we'll sit down with you and tell you exactly what we're doing. We've got, we've got performance evaluation, okay? And I, you know, we can't.
I can see that, but, maybe, but, you know, it's going to take time to change it.
Right.
No, no, we.
Absolutely.
After two years.
So we need to, what we need to do is meet with you guys, I, that's a start. We'll meet with you guys, go over those gray areas, and have those, you know, and work those out, and have a presentation.
And we'll give you documentation of what's happened.
But what she's saying is that they can't, three people cannot solve this. We are with this until next June, at least, and it's going to take time. So again, back to what I said about gray areas, again, I'm against a special town meeting, because nothing's going to change until June, anyway, so maybe we can push to have something put on the special, on the town meeting, to talk about a charter commission, to at least begin it. That's, that's where I'm coming from.
Well, I think we can, I think.
Carol's right on. This, this, we can't ask three people to do this for us.
Can we start the charter commission without a town meeting vote? Hmm? No? Okay.
Nope.
Um.
But see, the articles.
Let's start with that.
The articles, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a timeline. The articles for the special, the, an annual town meeting in April, all articles have to be submitted by the end of January. So here we are in this, you know, September, you've got October, November, December, and you've got four months to prepare for the April town meeting. And whatever time you need, we need to meet with you to give you all this recommendation and tell you what the problem is, we give it to you.
How about if we meet, can we meet with you guys next week? Is that, that, that okay with you?
We, we'd have to discuss a.
Right, they should meet first.
Usually convenient time that we could meet.
Oh, just to meet with.
They should absolve and, and take in what we've said and what they've heard.
And then call, call us, and we'll, we'll meet with you. We'll have a post-a-public meeting.
Take the questions you have.
Yeah.
You, you should have received them with your, your packs of information tonight, when you get a chance, take a look at them, and, and we can discuss those when we do meet again, get some ideas and input from the board of selectmen. Mr. Chairman, you have to realize, no matter what route we go, it's going to take some time, whether it be changes to charter, or changes to special act. Recent conversation with Attorney Drukas, and correct me if I'm not on point, if there's a renewal of existing, current town administrator's contract, or a, a contract with a newer town administrator, there should be an opportunity to tighten up the language, what the expectations are of the board and of the town, with respect to those gray areas in contract language, until permanent solutions are put in place.
So we're going to get a, we're going to have the new contract starting July 1st of next year, that new contract, you know, because it, it will be redone, because that current contract expires June 30th.
Yeah, and it, it essentially says that the town administrator's position are those which are laid out in the special act.
Right.
Which is, adopts all those gray areas and any subject term.
Yeah, we can rewrite that contract to cover us, but in the meantime, we, we need the changes as recommended by you and Attorney Drukas, you know, and the timing and how you, the wording of the article, so we don't.
And Steve, at the same time, you suggested that, as a group, you want to meet with the town administrator too.
Correct.
So that will take time.
We would certainly value his input from, from his role, serving as town administrator for the last three.
So I'm going to look over these questions.
Yep.
Move on, and then hopefully, we'll get invited to one of your meetings.
Absolutely.
We'll come in, and we'll go over them.
Why don't you give us a couple of weeks to get, get these, all our questions up to you, and get it sent to you prior to our meeting? Is that agreed?
That's great. If, if, or the chairman can let us know when you're ready, then we can, you know, schedule around it.
I'm, I'm very flexible.
We can send it all to him, so you get one document from each of us. There'll be one document under each selectmen, and then you recap it and send it to the committee.
Okay.
All right? And in the meantime, you can meet with the town administrator in the next couple of weeks, or whenever he's available. All right.
Thank you very much.
And Dan's script too, I don't want to leave him out. Okay, okay.
Jim, Carol.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drukas, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Attorney Drukas, and we appreciate you taking time tonight.
Thanks, Chris. Yep? Do you want to come up here, Chris?
Chris, come up here.
Um, thank you for having me here tonight, and working with the committee a little bit. Um, one of, one of the things that I think everybody's got to understand is, is process. And I think a little bit of the process has gotten overlooked a little bit. This committee is, is, is a, is a vehicle of town meeting. It's not a vehicle of the board of selectmen, it's not a vehicle of, of the town administrator. Their report is to town meeting. Any, any action that would then be taken would have to be voted on by town meeting at whenever the next, when they say that they're ready to talk to town meeting. One of the dangers that you're facing with what you're talking about, is you're talking about amending the act, which then has to be, at some point, brought into the charter. One of the things that I know we've discussed, is that why are we doing this as a two-step process? And I, I think that maybe the, the move is to get the feedback from you gentlemen and from the town administrator, and with that information, be able to go to town meeting in November, or next April, whenever it is, and say, look, it's time for a charter commission. And rather than us try to put, to use the expression lipstick on a pig, let's do this right, let's meld it all together, let's deal with all of the issues, and let's do it with a comprehensive nine-person committee, if that's what it takes, using the talent that is readily available, using Dan, and using any, any other consultant that you pick. So rather than necessarily be concerned with just fixing this act a, a little bit.
Right.
Uh, why not do the, do the whole process? And, and in the meantime, that process is going to take longer than to next July 1, so deal with your issues on July 1 in the contract negotiation. You can do that.
Right, right.
So I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood process. And, and, and the process being, this is a body of town meeting, this is not a body of the selectmen or the town administrator, and they report to town meeting based upon the information they gather.
Right, right.
And I thank you.
And that's why I had suggested that they come to the annual town meeting with a recommendation for a charter review. That, that's where I see it going.
Or a special town meeting.
Right, and I think, um.
I don't see that.
Honestly, I think that we, we, you know, looking at the questions, these are the, the questions, these are the first I've seen them, so I really like to look, look through them, you know, and they're, they're good questions, I, I just read, read through them, so that we can meet with them.
Absolutely.
Ahead of time.
Well, that's essential.
And, and figure out what we, you know, what we think is right for the town.
That's a good idea, and then we, they can write their report for the April town meeting.
Right. It's a better idea, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Chris. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay. So that's a. No, next on the agenda is the emergency sewer repairs. Danny Cofflin's here from Cofflin Engineering, and Dennis Wall, the town superintendent, is here to talk to us about it.
Oh, I got this, did I hear what I read?
Oh, it's a, it's a more comprehensive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dan, I'm Richie Lombard.
Hi, Rich.
Nice to meet you. How are you doing?
I know, huh? It's been a while. I don't come for you guys too often.
No.
But I should.
I need bigger writing.
Yeah? I'll try to guide, some of these are pretty small.
Well, Seth?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be ready.
It's worth a thank you for the opportunity to update you guys, the board of selectmen, on the progress that we've made to date, and to address the wa, water, excuse me, the sewer infrastructure, that the challenges, what challenges that we, we face today. To my left is Dan Cofflin, he's the principal of Cofflin Environmental Engineering, he's the author of the Water Distribution and Wastewater Collection Report that was commissioned back in 2015-ish, has been subsequently updated much of this year. Mr. Cofflin has been guiding our engineering efforts, and will speak to you, to your questions. So there's a package before you, it's a summary of recommendations of short and long-term action items. It illustrates some targeted times, action items with a brief description, current status of those actions, and estimated cost for those actions. The presentation format was put together by the town administrator. The content, however, was derived from Cofflin's Capital Improvement Plan that I just spoke of. The Water and Sewer Committee, that consisted of Mark Cullen, Steve Smith, Frank McCottrell, and Chairman Barilla, as well as myself. And it's also being driven by ongoing conditions. As a community, we're well aware that we, we experienced three major sewer breaks over a short period of time. These events proved very, very costly, they were extremely, they were extremely expensive wake-up call to the fragility of the system. So what we've done so far, there are a couple of things. One is, we have made some pumping control adjustments at the Lowlands Pumping Station. We've purchased. So what we've done so far, there are a couple of things. One is, we have made some pumping control adjustments at the Lowlands Pumping Station. We've purchased some, uh, emergency repair, emergency repair materials. Uh, we're exploring the possibility of creating a, uh, an emergency system bypass, you know, with this town of Swambskut and, uh, the city of Lynn Water Sewer. We have met with those, um, with the, those communities, uh, Swambskut officials, as well as their engineer. I've met with Lynn Water Sewer, uh, to discuss the probability and the cost benefit, to make that bypass happen. We're currently exploring several methods to determine the, a conditions assessment of the force main. However, uh, some of the, some of the means and methods are proving to be costly and they're very, they're very invasive, uh, to maintaining the integrity of the pipe. And fifth, we're, we're exploring the opportunity, uh, or potential of just abandoning, uh, the system that's in place now and just going straight across the harbor into the city of Lynn's Water Sewer Treatment Plant. So with that, um, that's where we're at, at this point in time. There's a lot of information in front of you. There's been quite a bit of effort, uh, with the administrator's guidance. If you have any questions, I'd like to entertain them at this point.
What's, what's the, um, I like the idea of going across the harbor. I mean, what's, what's the, uh, the range? I mean, how many linear, how many miles of pipe do we have now?
Well, it's seventeen thousand five hundred linear feet of force main.
Right.
So it's about three miles roughly of pipe.
So if you went across the harbor, that, that would just...
It would cut it down. Um, the harbor length, I, I have a couple of different renditions in there, but, um, it's anywhere between almost seven thousand feet to forty-two hundred feet. It's still significant. And it is very significant relative to directional drills. You know, you have a pipe that basically is drawn through the bore hole when you're doing a directional drill. And the integrity of the pipe itself has to be significant enough and substantial enough to avoid, uh, to resist the tension forces.
Right.
And, uh, a lot of the pipes that you have for that length do not allow for that length of pipe. So this is a very difficult pole to go across the entire harbor. So I've kind of, I've kind of gone through a bunch of things here and I just wanted to, you know, I haven't had a chance to talk to you regarding some of these things, um, since the, since the series of breaks. I wanted to make sure you had as much information as possible. I threw this together, not a lot of description relative to text. So if you don't mind, I was just going to kind of run through it real, as quickly as possible, just to, so you have a feel for it. Dennis said that the first page is basically a summary of the most recent events and that's correct. Page two, um, and some, some extracts from page three and also page four. These are all from the capital plan that we produced. And one of the items we had in there was basically evaluation of the force main. The force main's forty years old, but we've had several breaks in it. If you look at page five essentially, uh, you can see that three of the breaks are very close to each other. And these all tend to be on the Linway area. We also had some problems over at the pump station itself. Page six is kind of a blow-up of there to just give you a rough idea of where, where and when these occurred. You know, roughly six months ago, we had the, the last break, which was significant, a lot of bypass pumping, a large cost. A year ago, just a little ways up the street and about fifteen years ago, a little bit further up the street. All in the same general area. Now this force main is only forty years old. I say only forty years old because most systems like this are usually designed at least for fifty or sixty years and sometimes last a hundred. Okay? Uh, in this case, these, these failures, um, are, uh, are basically early, okay, to say the least. Looking at, uh, page seven, you can see that it's not the best picture, but I've kind of outlined in yellow the area of delamination that occurred around the most recent break. And what happened is the outside of the pipe actually exfoliated or peeled away from the pipe itself. And then in the center, a hole, hole was produced at the deepest point of delamination. And that hole opened up to the break that we had. And that really posed the most difficult solution too, is because we had a large area of the pipe that was delaminated. So repair sleeve, the ones that were in stock at least, were not able to bridge the entire gap and create a good seal to allow that to happen. And that's why we ended up over a period of time to basically to do the, the larger repair sleeve, which you see on page nine. I've added page eight in there too, because this is just one of the conditions in there. One of the things, I, I was able to see this past break. Uh, I was not able to see some of the other ones that occurred. But on this past break, I, I was able to look at the soils. The soils are very fine. You have a lot of organic or marine clays in there. It's a mix of material. It's not like your sands like you might normally see along the causeway area. So you had some material in here at the, this pipe location. The pipe actually went underneath an electrical duct bank, so it was deep. So we have a lot of things working against us here. The evidence of the pipe delaminating on the outside or the corrosion occurring on the outside of the pipe gives us some indication of what might have happened. Okay? One is we can get corrosion from the soils themselves. Okay? We can get, uh, a lot of induced current and, and some corrosion from the soils. This pipe was supposed to be all encased in a polyeth- polyethylene jacket. And in the area that we saw, there was very little evidence of that jacket. There was some evidence on the adjacent pipe. Uh, that was in concrete encased though. So for the most part, this may not, this portion that went underneath the duct bank may not have been encased. Another thing that we also noticed and I, if you look at page ten, the two areas, the one to the, the right of the, the, the plan is the most recent and the one to the left is the one that happened not too long ago. I've, uh, basically highlighted all the electrical lines in pink. And you can also see in yellow, a couple of lines in there, and those are the gas lines. Okay? If you look at the concentration of, between the gas lines and the electrical lines for these breaks, that's another issue that might, might be an issue here. Okay? Stray electrical currents. And this is basically cathodic corrosion or, uh, you know, basically, uh, delamination of the pipe or loss of piping material due to induced currents. The, the reason I put the gas pipe on there is because this whole stretch, and you can see on the next page eleven, is protected by rectifying equipment. So basically the gas lines in these area are actually inducing current in the gas lines. Okay? And those currents are supposed to go to, uh, annod packs or into the ground. But even these rectifying equipment could be adding to the problem. You know, of this area specifically and why we're seeing so many, uh, problems. I should mention that the, uh, earlier break that we also had, had similar, I'm told, had similar types of characteristics. A delamination of the outside plus a hole formed at the deepest point of delamination. So I think a lot of things are working against us here. The other thing obviously too is because this pipe was deeper, it is more subject to the fluctuation of groundwater table and saltwater intrusion. When we were doing the work on, on the repair, um, water or tidal water was actually flushing in along the duct bank in this area. So there's a very big flux of tidal, um, tidal waters going in and out. Saltwater, stray electrical currents, plus poor soils and maybe an incomplete polyethylene jacket, all added to the, to the causes in my opinion. Okay? They're all working against you. So the question is, um, is this, because it's early on breaks, is this something that is, um, basically conducive of the whole main? Well, we had some other problems on the main and that was close to the pump station itself. And that area we ended up replacing with PVC pipe along its, its length. And obviously you know that's next to a large electrical substation. So I think the same type of process scenario was occurring with that pipe as well. Page twelve is just to give you an idea of, of, you know, the process as far as, um, as, as the flow of electricity goes from one point to the other. If it's away from the pipe itself, the pipe will actually delaminate and lose material and lose metal. When we did the repair, we actually installed additional annodes on that pipe to try to protect some of the system around that area, so we don't have another recurring break. Hopefully that will take up some of the, uh, loss of material if currents are indeed, um, you know, inducing these currents.
How long do the annodes usually last?
It depends on the, 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 the source of the current and the power of the current, how close it is. But typically those annodes are, are, are good for about a twenty-year period. Uh, the ones I put in were, were fairly good size as well. So, uh, the only problem we have is this pipe, um, is a gasketed pipe. Okay? And unless it's physically connected each joint with a mechanical coupling or a flange, the electrical conductivity may not carry through. If it's a push-on joint pipe as, as well, I'm assuming a good portion of it will be, except near bends and, you know, where it goes up and down, that electrical current could be broken. So basically just throwing annodes in or putting in rectifying equipment on the existing pipeline may not help you because it may only limit you to a certain area. So it's a problem doing it after the fact. A lot of times what we do, and I always recommend it, you know, when we're doing water work in town too, is we always connect the joints with bronze wedges. They provide them with the pipe. They're available with the pipe. You put in the bronze wedges, completes the electrical circuit in the pipe and basically you can then trace the pipe easier. You can also protect it easier from electrical currents. So that's kind of where I think the breaks are and where we've been with the breaks. We did, um, you know, we did, we have been looking at a lot of, a lot of different things. Page thirteen is basically, uh, the Swambskut Force Main Connection. And, you know, I, I understand Swambskut's maybe not the most receptive to doing something like this. They have a infrastructure that they want to protect. So any type of difference like this, and, and, uh, although I have done multiple pump stations on the same force main, it's not common, I should tell you. There are a lot of things that can influence that. Surge, um, hydraulic transients, surges, pressure waves, um, when two pumps are, are working at the same time, limiting capacity, you know, if, if we have wet weather events and two pumps are trying to work on the same thing, obviously they want to make sure that their system isn't compromised. It would take, uh, you know, a little bit more investigation relative to how we would pump into their system and sequence the pumps. And I'm trying to get some additional information on their flows, um, to evaluate that. But on page thirteen, we've pretty much outlined how we would have an alternate or, or a bypass connection going to Swambskut. You can see from the rotary, we would start there at our pipeline, which is dashed in yellow, follow the red line over to their pipeline, which is in yellow at the upper, upper, uh, right-hand side. And basically we can connect up to that point. This would allow us basically to isolate that portion along the Linway, which in my mind is probably the most receptive to failure because of, again, all the electrical transients and the conditions and the bends that we have in that system. So this is definitely something we should look at as far as connection to Swambskut. Page fourteen actually shows a little bit clearer picture using ours. Uh, the pink spot on page fourteen is basically where we have isolation valves currently. So we could shut those valves for a period of time, drop in the additional connections, turn the main back on, and then basically extend the line or extend the line, um, you know, at our leisure at that point in time. But it is possible to do the installation. Fifteen is basically a blow-up of that area. We do have two line valves. The problems we have though with these line valves is they've never been operated in my, as far as I know. So you're talking about a gate valve that's on a pipeline that hasn't been turned for forty years. Okay? The likelihood of it failing is high. Okay? A regular valve exercising program on the force main is really something we always recommend. To go out there and exercise the valves at least once a year. A lot of times you'll have subcontractors actually doing this. When you go and try to do these valves now, the danger you have is the valve could drop or the valve could get stuck or otherwise break. So now you, you're basically in a position where you never get that valve open again. Okay? And you're into another emergency scenario. Okay? Uh, if any work is being done on this main, you're going to have to isolate portions of it and de-water it. And that's a very expensive operation because now you bypass pumping at the pumping station. So whenever you're doing anything, the plan would be to do as much as you can during that period and have everything on standby, additional valves, additional pipe, everything on standby in case the worst-case scenario were to occur. Okay? Page sixteen is basically where we reconnect up. We'd be basically adding, um, a valve on their line and also tapping into their system. So that would be, in order to do that, unless they allow us to do a tapping sleeve and valve, we're talking about a temporary shutdown on theirs as well. They would probably prefer a fixed valve installed with a T, something not that would, you know, interrupt the integrity of their pipe. In other words, you'd be replacing a whole section. In this case, trying to do that physically, you'd have to have that all pre-assembled to minimize the shutdown. But now you're talking about a shutdown or temporary bypass on their system potentially. And again, I don't know what the condition of their valves are, so it might be the same type of scenario. We talked about, um, the possibility of going in there and TVing the pipe. And based upon the failure, um, the, the mode of failures that we've exhibited, I wouldn't suspect you're going to see very much on the inside of the pipe. So TV inspection of the pipe is probably not the ideal thing to do in terms of evaluation of the pipe. Okay? Even when you do TV on the force main, you have to take down the force main, obviously. And, um, you know, you need also access to the force main in the range of about six to seven hundred feet. Every six to seven hundred feet, you're going to dig a hole, you're going to cut in, cut into the pipe, either cut in a section or cut in a hole or window like is shown on page seventeen to allow access of the camera in and out, because the camera will have to travel through. You could approach it from two ends. You might be able to increase the length a little bit more, but you're still talking about several excavations and disruption of that pipe. Okay? When you cut a window like is shown on here, you might be able to repair it with a sleeve. Okay? It's not the ideal thing because that's a very large hole and you need a, a, a good sleeve that's, you know, installed properly. If you have any delamination in those areas, it's going to be difficult to set. A lot of times what you'll do is solid sleeve couplings and drop in a new piece of pipe. It's the safest, safest thing. But TV inspection really, um, doesn't give you a lot in terms of, at least in my mind, as far as what you have. You can see on page eighteen, that's a typical delamination from the inside. Some of this might be occurring and I'll give you an example of where that might be. And this is at air pockets or gas pockets within the main. And this is related to the air release and vacuum valves in the system. A lot of those valves are now defunct. They've been removed. They're not functional. So we, we have a basically a, a force main that doesn't have a mode to release these gases. These gases are typically hydrogen sulfide that forms on the upside of the pipe. By removing the air out of the system, you remove the corrosion potential for that. So you could have interior delamination at the areas of the air release valves. And that's why when we, one of our recommendations was to do an evaluation of the air release valves and to repair as many as we could. Western Sampson started that. They have completed it, right?
Yeah, we're in the process right now of their investigation and their pricing to, to repair those, uh, air release valves.
But one of the things that became apparent is because a lot of these have just been truncated off and blind flanged because they broke off over a period of time, um, you know, those, those systems may be the most susceptible. You know, where you have these valves and the piping corroded away and dissolved is probably a very good chance that these gases have formed and have advanced corrosion on the fittings. Okay? And those are the ones that are most likely needed to, to purge the air and to remove the air from the system. Unfortunately, those are in such a condition where some of them can only be repaired with the main shutdown. So now you're into that same mode. You have to shut down the force main. You have to de-water the force main to install these valves. Again, a large cost to repair some of these valves. My general recommendation is to repair what we can, which is exposed, to make that functional. And at the same time, we do those repairs to try to make a measurement on the thickness of the pipe at these locations to see how much has been delaminated at this point. Okay? Just to get an idea of how much we have left as far as pipe thickness. There are several areas on the main where we have these air release valves. Not all of them are primary points. They're just high points and they're subtle high points. A lot of times the air can move through these point, portions without much issue, but some are very critical. They are at high points and those are the ones that tend to be the most trouble relative to repairs. We looked at other evaluation methods and we, we made some of these available to you. I think I sent you copies of the full quotes. Ecologics, that was the one we originally looked at when we were talking about it in the capital plan. They basically do, um, basically... They basically do, basically, an acoustic evaluation of the pipe. The only thing is you need to have them get down to the pipe every three to five hundred feet so that they can listen directly to the pipe in these locations. So, that's either open excavation or excavation using some type of vacuum excavator to basically create at least a six-inch hole down to the pipe. The location of the pipes is approximate relative to its known location, so it's kind of hit or miss. A lot of times, if we have to go through that and do these excavations, I'd say fifty percent of them might end up becoming open excavations. And now, we have pavement repairs, additional police control.
Utilities, traffic.
Right. So, a lot of extra cost. So, even though it's ninety-two thousand dollars, you know, initially, I was looking at it in terms of maybe every thousand feet, we could, we could try doing it because we didn't have as much high priority at that point, but we've had a lot of recent breaks. At this point in time, a little bit more exacting mode of detection would probably be needed, so it's down to at their recommendation, three to five hundred feet. That's a lot of holes in the system, a lot of cost. So, you could probably add another two hundred, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand on top of that cost by the time you get done. PICA is a different one. That's basically what they call their sea snake, and that's a non-intrusive thing that can basically travel through the pipe from one end to the other. It's, it's very probable that we could utilize this. When the force main was built, we had basically pigging stations installed. And that was basically, a pig is basically a foam, a hard foam plug that is basically pushed by the hydraulic fluid to clean the pipe out on a periodic base. They've never been utilized. The design at the pumping station is probably not the best because it uses knife gates, and those are very tough to seal and tough to operate, so we may have some problems trying to utilize those. And there's also a receiving station at the treatment plant itself as well. So, in theory, if those systems were operational, we could use, utilize this system, introduce it into the pipeline, send it through the pipeline, and get some very good feedback on air pockets, leaks, and any abnormalities in the pipe wall thickness. So, it's a very good system for doing that. It's just there may be some staging and setup costs. There's always a potential where these can get stuck in the system. You have a half-close valve or something else in the system that is an obstruction. The sea snake is a little bit smaller. It doesn't rely on fins like the Pure Technology, which is the one at the end, so it doesn't have to touch the pipeline. So, it's a little bit easier to get it through the system without potentials for plugs. It also, it is also bidirectional. If it does get stuck, we can basically reverse the flow through pumping to send it back the other way if we need it to. One thing is with the ecologics and the, the PICA, the PICA, although it can be used with the wastewater flow, it works better with clear water flow. So, there may be a period of time where we're actually adding water to the wet well just to keep it as thin as possible while still maintaining pumping. At least, that would be my recommendation. We may have to, if we get, if we send it through the pig line, we may want to pig the line a couple of times just to, just to clear it up and clear out debris in, in some of the, the lower areas where you might have debris accumulation. The Pure Technologies is very similar to that. It's much more expensive, only primarily because they're adding other evaluation efforts as well. That's a one-directional sensor, so if it gets stuck in the pipeline, you're probably going to have to dig it up to get it out. So, it has some drawbacks. If you looked at just the pipe wall evaluation, their cost was about two-seventy-five, so not too far off of PICA. I also gave you a couple of the proposals in there. I know you have the full documents, but there is additional work associated with this, so all these costs that they have in their proposals is still subject to additional costs for the town. Twenty-seven and twenty-eight, although twenty-eight's a little truncated there, is basically the pigging facilities that you have right now in the pumping station. The other thing we talked about was if we do evaluate the pipe and find out what's going on, what are our options as far as repair, replacement? They do make, and they have been using in some, in some instances, I should say, a basically, a liner system that is basically put into the pipe and formed in the pipe. Now, for pressure pipes, it's not as common. It's mostly for gravity sewer systems, but they do have a pressure system to do that. Again, if you're doing a liner system, you have to dig up the pipe and open up a section of about ten feet wide every six to seven hundred feet. So, a long period of time of, of the pipeline being down and a lot of repair work on that pipeline. So, liners don't make sense unless you can take down the pipeline. The reason I'm still putting it in here is because if we had that alternate connection to Swampscott, we could isolate the most problematic line, and at that point in time, a liner becomes a feasible alternative. I got to tell you, the, the liner costs are probably in the range of about two hundred dollars a linear foot, and that's about the same price as replacement of the pipe. But in our case, basically, because of the bends, the other utilities, it's probably better to line the pipe than to dig it up and try to replace it because you're dealing with all those other utilities that are on top of your pipe. So, at two hundred dollars, it's probably still a better deal than trying to replace it. The ideal thing in my mind is what we did overall, obviously, in, along, right near the pumping station, that's replacement with a PVC pipe. We have a two-hundred-and-thirty-five class PVC, PSI, class PVC pipe in there that we replaced it with. No corrosion issues, long-term, good joints, so long as the pressure class is good, and so long as you've evaluated the, the pressure transients that we talked about, these pressure waves, the water hammer, the hydraulic effects, and operate your pump station accordingly, then you shouldn't have any issues with any of these. Either PVC or HDPE, which is a high-density polyethylene. High-density polyethylene actually can expand and it can contract on the system. So, if you got a, 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 a good class or high-pressure class HDPE pipe, that would be ideal because it would absorb any of those pressure transients. On page thirty, basically, there's a couple of pictures of the PVC pipe. There's also a picture of basically slip line over to the right. Slip lining could be done, especially along the causeway where it's nice and straight for the most part, but when you start getting into the area where we're crossing in bends and going up and down, it doesn't make sense to do that. I have put in the, a couple of the diagrams I sent you on the, on the crossway pipelines. Again, these are very long lines. The longest one that I am aware of is sixty-four hundred feet, and the first one I have here on page thirty-one is sixty-eight hundred feet. You need a long area to set up and install this. It would probably have to occur on the opposite side of the harbor because you really don't have that type of setup area in the town. But in my mind, this would be too much of a challenge, and it'd be unpredictable at this point in time to invest money along that route without a lot more information. It'd also be extensive permitting, access rights that we'd have to deal with because we need to work on the other side of the, of the, of the harbor as well and gain access to the plant, and environmental issues that we'd have to address. But, I mean, usually, that's not too insurmountable relative to, because we're deep basically under the, under the harbor. But it is a very long draw, a very long pipeline.
You're talking about, but, but if you went down and, and put that pipe under the harbor at the end of the causeway going across?
That was the other alternative, right.
That would be, that would be a smaller.
That'd be a smaller run. It's about forty-three hundred feet roughly for a directional drill, certainly in the feasibility area. Still have the similar staging area. In fact, it'd be more directional relative to the pipeline placement, so that might be feasible to bypass that area, which is the most problematic.
What, that, that's a, it's kind of like.
That'd be page thirty-two.
Yeah, I can see that. That's a real big angle there. That have any effect on that?
The angle from the causeway over?
Yeah.
No, that would all be hot pipe and open excavation, so that wouldn't be an issue. Although, it looks like ninety degrees there, it would never be a ninety-degree.
That's right. What's the, I, I, I mean, I honestly, I like that idea better because.
You get it away from the electrical equipment, you get away from all the other utilities, and, you know, the question, the only question, I guess, is really, you know, we're assuming some of the reliability of that existing pipeline along the causeway, something we still need to address to some degree.
I wonder how, I don't think we've ever had any problems there.
We haven't.
No. It's always on the lineway. But I think it's time to replace that pipe. I mean, it's easy digging.
Mm-hmm.
It won't take long.
Again, we're talking, you know, forty years we're into the pipe.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, your miles of repair, I mean, replacing is we can't afford, what'd that cost us? Two million dollars?
A million five between all three.
Million five. We can't afford to shut it down and have the pump trucks come in and pop out the nine satellite pump station and then the major pump station. The people, you know.
Dan, if you were to go with one of these harbor alternatives, could it lend itself to a regionalization, Swampscott land, whatever, probably Swampscott? The reason I ask is that.
Yes, it could.
Community compact funding for regionalization is prime, and I can see where we could get a great deal of state money here to offset the cost.
Yeah, certainly, you know, just as we could go to Swampscott, Swampscott could go to us as far as getting across the, that way. Whether they abandon their existing system and buy into this as a regional solution, that's still something.
Or have bypass for.
Right.
As an alternative, yeah.
Bypass would always be the solution, too.
They've got that pipe going down the lineway as well.
Correct. Well. To some portion. They actually go up the Hart Road and cut across, but they do.
That's a gravity-fed pipe down from my short drive, isn't it? That's a force main.
No, it's still a force main all the way.
Twenty-four force main.
No, I mean.
Yes.
From Swampscott. Don't they have a Swampscott?
It's a force main.
Is it the whole thing?
Yeah.
They'd be better off dovetailing with us if we did this route.
Well, especially if state funds were available to offset, yeah.
This would, this would actually.
Nice for them, too.
Remove some of the problems that they have with some of their system. They're going uphill.
Right.
And so, they're pumping against much, much more head. This alternative would reduce their head and probably reduce some of their pressure transients.
And they go up the Hart Street, right?
They're over Sagamow Hill. They actually weave through Sagamow Hill to Broad Street. They're on the opposite side. They're on the south pump side of the causeway.
So, it would be, it would be wise for them to.
So, we, they, we would, they would. It'd be advantageous from an economics perspective, less, less head, less pumping costs involved, and they could actually get more capacity out of the line.
They would join up at, on our end of it at the, on the part of the, at the end of the causeway.
Pretty close to the same, same way, yeah.
That's a good idea to get ahold of them and, you know, press to talk to them and see what we can do with that.
Yeah, we're currently in discussions with them right away, right now. So, Dan, is there any way to give like a ballpark on this? Not right tonight, but a ballpark on if you were to try to bring this together as a regional effort? I, I know we're talking big bucks here, but that way, we could at least start talking with the state to see if through the community compact, there's, there's that kind of money available.
Yeah, I think it would be ideal to get, you know, maybe Gino in the, in the room at the same time to see what their expectations are and, you know, to make sure that, that we have another partner in a regional plan, obviously. But, I mean, I think there are some benefits that we can present to them relative to this option, and, you know, it makes economic sense for both communities to do it together.
That's a great idea. And, and we'll go right, the, the nice part about that going across the harbor, there's no, you don't have to worry, you know?
Right. Right.
I think it's, thank you. This is terrific. I, I like this idea, to be honest with you. I think we need to get, you know, and you have to talk to them now.
Yeah, would you like us to also talk to the state to start looking at funding? Because I think it'd be key to, if you're going to dance with a partner, it'd be good to bring some money to the, the floor. And so, that may be key to having Swampscott really embrace this. So, okay?
I think so.
Okay, great.
All right. What are you going to do? Am I going to do? What are you going to do? I think what we should do is have them come back with us with a, with a plan from Swampscott to see if we can. I wouldn't go with Swampscott. I think Swampscott's part three, part five. Let's get part one done first. Well, okay, part one, let's, let's see what it's going to cost us to go down the end of the causeway and go across. We need to replace the pipe from the, the major pump station to the end of the causeway. That has to be replaced. Even though you say it's, you know, it's, might be okay, it might not be, we can't afford to have that pipe break in any region at all. It's on the beach side, isn't it? Yeah, but I mean, it'd be, it'd be a simple project for you to just, you know, leave the live, the main county working till you.
Go on the side of it.
Till you go inside of it or on the other side, but, but you're in the parking lot.
You have a lot more room.
You've got a lot more room. It's easy digging down to the end of the causeway. Then you go across the end of the causeway, you start bringing it over, or whatever you're in, you're in, and to run it underground, okay, under the water. The, I've seen the operation in Houston, okay, where they have pipes underground.
Sure.
And it's for the drilling outfits, okay, and the huge mains to bring oil in.
Yep.
And there's a whole procedure for that, how far it has to be buried and.
Sure.
What they need to do, and you're going to get permits and working.
Yep.
I like that idea. And then you go to Swampscott and say, we've got the funding to do this from the town, okay, to do this, and if you'd like to tie in, let's, you know, talk down. But I would get us, you upset, I'd get it all down and start moving in that direction. That's what my, my suggestion is.
Yep.
I wouldn't go down the lineway at all, okay? I'd go right under that water at the end of the causeway across because it's the sharpest point between the.
Yep.
And then, you're going to need all kinds of, but you're going to need authorization and bonding and money for this to get it started. Then we'll go to McGee, okay, and the rest of the boys and say, listen, this is what our plans is. Maybe the state could help us, okay, or the federal government. But, I mean, we've got to get a number for this, okay? And we got to get it approved by the townspeople.
Right. The only thing I wanted to say is basically, the whole process involved here is, is basically takes time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The one thing you could do right now, at least to safeguard it from another break on the causeway, is to try to proceed with that Swampscott connection if at all possible. You can still design it from the perspective that they can go our way. In other words, it wouldn't be an eighteen-inch, it would be a twenty-four inch.
You mean in the, on the lineway?
Yes, going to their connection. At least you could design that. If you design, build, and put that in, then basically, you've had, you have a potential for still getting some regional money for the.
You know, you know Gino Creston?
Yes.
Great guy.
Right, but he wants to protect his utilities.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, you know? The one thing that we'd probably have to do, too, is we'd have to probably do a pressure transient evaluation because I know they were very hot on that when they did their lines and they did their system. So, we'll probably have to do that evaluation as well and present that to them. But I think if we at least get that alternative in, you know, it can't hurt. If you add another break on the, on the lineway, you'd be able to shut that valve and go over while the rest of the process is still going on.
We have a break on the lineway, and it's in the outbound lane, not in the inbound lane.
Right.
You've got a major problem. Now, you're detouring that hole down to.
For the center.
Market Street to commercial. I mean, it's like, and you talk about a nightmare on Elm Street.
But our line is on, on.
What do we have on the, on the? Your, your line crosses over from the inbound lane where it broke, and it goes across to the outbound lane.
No, it's, it's in the gutter line. It's on, it's on the water side.
Right.
Comes, it comes, it comes out of the rotary?
Those guys were showing me the plans when, when the break happened.
It's on the road, so it's.
Yeah. I think it's on the outbound lane. On, on the, on the beach side of the causeway, Dan, what do you have there for, what do you think you have to transient voltage is there? I mean, you have a lot of stuff underground, a lot of pipes, a lot of other stuff?
Basically, you have the gas rectifying equipment, which is basically inducing currents.
And not water mains.
And the two water mains. Oh, and the two water mains.
They're in, they're on the causeway side. They're on the, the causeway, and the gas drain is on the other side, too. So, that, that means the causeway pipe is probably.
We need to do that, that's right. So, but. As you look at here, this is very close to the rotary. The rotary's over here, so it comes across and then it's basically out in that lane as you go down.
Okay, no, going down, down from the rotary. With the wa, with that, the original break, the big one.
Yep.
Next to the.
Block Tower building.
Block Tower.
Yep, then it crosses back over.
It crosses back over to the outbound
That was one, and that was one.
So it crosses on the outbound lane?
No.
No, it's still on
It's, it's in the gutter line.
It's along the other side.
Of the water side of
It's on the, uh
North side of it.
The, um, U, the U-Haul side there.
Yes.
Yeah, but you'd have to, you know, in order to get that repaired, you'd have to shut down, you know, you're gonna
Well, we know, yeah.
That's the pipe that you wanna ban.
Been there, done it.
That's the, that's the pipe that you wanna Well, you wanna ban the whole linway. So what would it cost us to do, say, is we have the, the force main from up, up until, uh, I think it's up to the store there, the old pharmacy has been done. So from there, down to the end of the causeway, so we're looking at that and then going across. I would, I'd like to see us get a price on that, see, just see what it would cost us to do that.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to do a little pre-design on how we'd do the, the harbor crossing, get some elevations, some depths.
You, you, you have no money in your budget for startup, things like that.
Not to this extent.
No. Well, we gotta find us some money. Well, we gotta have a special town meeting and get this approved, the initial concept. I mean, have it December first for a special town meeting to get this, we can't afford this thing to shut down. I don't know, do we need a special town meeting? Do we need, this doesn't have to go to town meeting, I don't think.
Just for borrowings, if we were to
If we're gonna borrow, yeah. He needs, he's gonna need a half a million dollar startup money to get the, get things prepared, the engineering and all that stuff.
Dan, if you were to say a special town meeting is advantageous, when would be the ideal window for timing? Because what we'd be going, we'd be going to the town meeting for borrowing authorization.
Right, in the fall or the spring?
Well, well, we have the April annual town meeting each year. But what we're talking about is something before April.
Right.
Uh, that would allow us to borrow and then keep rolling. I guess what I'm asking is how much lead time do you need to actually work out some of these details? And then be prepared to say, this is the plan, this is the number?
You know, I think six weeks is probably enough to at least get some ballparks as far as numbers, you know? A conceptual design that we can then price out.
Correct. What's it gonna cost us to get the conceptual design? I mean, that's, that's a
I mean, probably not that significant, maybe fifteen thousand dollars overall.
So, okay, so, I, I can find, I can find that. We, that's what, I think that's what we need to do, I mean, we need, we need to find out what we, how we wanna do it. Do we wanna go across the causeway? Do we wanna go across the water? Do we wanna go the old route?
I think we do the conceptual design, we get everything ready for the annual town meeting. That's how I look at it.
Right, and that would also give you a package where you could try to go for regional money or, you know, any additional funding that you can get as well.
And we keep everyone out there and, and up to date on what's going on. This is a very good start. And we keep updating the people and say, this is something that's big. And we'll have a conceptual design for you at X time and go with it.
Now, he has to wait to April? Well, I don't, I, I don't know if we can, um He said he's gonna be ready in what, in six weeks?
Six weeks with a conceptual design. It may take a little bit more effort to convince Swamp Scott of something, but
He's gotta get, he's gotta get startup money. Engineering design and, and then
Well, fifteen thousand dollars for a conceptual design.
They did the firehouse for fifteen thousand dollars. And it was well done. Then they did another one, but they can still do this for fifteen thousand.
Yeah, right now Dennis has about two hundred thousand in his budget, so, um
How much?
Two hundred thousand in his group budget. Uh, so he, he has flexibility, which would allow us to
So you're getting the two hundred thousand on the budget already? So you could, you could, yeah. I mean, that's my, that's, by the way, my, my interpretation of this, of all the The idea of going down the causeway and go across at the end of the causeway, eliminate the linway completely.
Correct.
Right, you could have that pipe still running and, oh God, it's on, until you put the new pipe in.
Right.
And I'd put a brand-new pipe from that pump station and blow it right to Lynn Water Sewer. Using the end of the causeway.
And you could, you could install that pipe as well without taking down the main.
And you explain that, explain that plan and the size, and then if you, we have to go to a larger one to accommodate Swamp Scott, which would be wise for them to come across, huge. And then we can apply for this, uh, you know, the money, either both communities separately or together. We could just plug the end off for them, where they could just tie in and it's on Well, they're gonna, that, that, this would be, you know, I think they'll like this.
We, we need a receiving location too, as well, so land issues are the, are also another thing that may or may not be able to be overcome.
I don't know where, where they end up into with the ferry and all that, you know, that whole area.
Right.
But it's right there, the Water and Sewer.
And a good portion of that is their land, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah. All right, so, we can afford fifteen thousand dollars to, to, to get a conceptual design. To, to, to figure out how it's just gonna cost us to do it. And we can't do anything in the winter time anyway, so, and then you'd be laying, laying that pipe right next to it. Lay it down and
Right, and we, yeah, I mean, we know how, what utilities are there and what aren't there, so most probably
It's all
But in the meantime, you have to understand that we're, there are still some repairs to apply now. Blow-off valves, air, air leak valves, and we're still gonna move forward and
Sure.
Right, to at least put a Band-Aid
Yeah, I think, they're evaluating the installations, I think at that point in time we look at them
Right.
And see where the best bang for the buck is, essentially.
We just prevent Just catch it from now and then
And, and we have all this time that we can discuss what we really want with you, and then we'll present it at the town meeting. That's the concept.
So, so now that you, I didn't know you had that kind of money, but, okay. We'll, we'll have a, I'm gonna have, we're gonna have another meeting?
That, that Frank and Mark and
Yes, yes.
Hey and
In fact, I, I need to get them, I need everyone to, um, I, I have that package that
Yeah, this here?
Yes.
Okay.
Steven has a package. Steve Smith.
That seems like the best solution to me, you know, going right across, right across the bay. And I, it's probably easy dredging, you know, I would think it would be easy digging. You don't know, so they, they bring the mob barge, you say, can they, that goes out the bid, you see the barge companies from salt coming up?
We can do that, that'd be great.
You know, that project.
There are two local communities who have, have gone underwater. Marblehead recently, in the last several years, and, and Gloucester just finished a project, correct?
Uh, Gloucester Beverly did some gas lines too.
Right.
Yeah, they did, along the coast with the gas line. And they, and now it's, it's
But they were, they were small.
Pipes were small, yeah, they weren't as big as this
And the, the lengths were also shorter.
How much revenue do we get out of the pipeline, do you know?
I hate to quote the number at this point.
Dennis, good to see you. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Don't hesitate to come up and Maybe we need to get Give us a little bit of money. Listen, I think A B and C should be, don't We've got a great guy here. And we've got a good player, he's a good manager, so, this is good. I, I, you know, I, I, I wait up, thinking about this at night, you know, at the
Yep.
Greg Stein, we gotta bring in those pump trucks for another million dollars. And we're just wasting money, just throwing money, bad money out.
And there's no guarantee
There's no guarantee.
No, no, I understand, hopefully you stop gaps and hold, but
Right.
Man, if it doesn't, we gotta, we got problems in the city.
Yes.
This town, they don't worry about anything, except, you know
That was a very expensive break.
The water, the water is running, okay? Powder snow
Flush.
And flush the truck. If they can't flush the truck, they're gonna shut down the water, like, you didn't do it, so, what about Well, nice
All right, thanks.
Thanks. Okay, next is
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. The Fire Safety Study Committee was slated, but they're not prepared. Uh, next would be Doggy Beach and Kite Surfers.
Do you want to take up the special?
On, on E, the special town meeting, could we like, just put that to bed one way or another?
Yeah, I mean, well, we voted not to have it, we
No, you didn't vote.
We did last week.
No, you didn't vote last week, you just said we're not going to have it. The person, you and Richie voted for it, one of you has to rescind your motion. Rescind the vote and do another motion. So it, it, it's still on the books.
Okay.
That came to me over the week that we missed that.
That, all right. Again, I'll, I'll I'll entertain a motion that we rescind our original motion to have a special town meeting. For, well, we don't know when it's supposed to, uh, November, whatever. Until, until further notice, until we know what we're, what we're gonna do with the sewer, Water and Sewer and the, um, I, I'm not gonna put on that because you, 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 you're putting too much in April. And it's gonna get convoluted and the priority is just Water and Sewer. We gotta get this thing going. Yeah, but he's, he's telling us he's got fifteen thousand dollars, he's got money to, to give us a design.
All right, so moved.
Okay.
I moved, somebody's got a second.
You've got a, you've got a, okay. Oh, can we just agree that we
Sure, we gotta, we can always bring it back on the floor, Richie, to have a special town meeting at any time.
Why vote? Just leave it open. And if something comes up, we can, we, we, we've got a special town meeting scheduled, but we haven't had the date because we're waiting for information. That information doesn't come alive, okay, it doesn't come, come to, and submit it. Can we keep it open-ended?
No, because the, the, was the twenty-seventh of November, Richie turned the book over and said the twenty-seventh of November.
So, no, no, I, I, okay, I'll leave it wide open, the date, I, I just, I put a date out there.
Rescind the date
So we'll rescind the date.
And then we can leave it open.
Yeah. And we'll leave it open. That's fine. Okay, I'll entertain a motion that we rescind the vote, entertain a motion that we leave it open for a future date.
If necessary.
If necessary.
I'll go with that. So moved.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried.
Great.
All right, so we're not gonna have a special town meeting in November, because we don't know what, we need more information. Upon more information, that's when we'll, we'll decide whether we have a special town meeting. All right, so now Doggy Beach and Kite Surfers.
If I may?
Yes.
The person who came before me, you knew him, he did, he was a kite surfer. What was his name from Little Mahan?
Dylan.
Dylan?
Oh, yeah, Dylan.
Dylan, this is for you, thank you very much. He sent us a great, a great email explaining that you do have procedures and you do follow procedures and you are watching over other kite surfers and that people who do make mistakes are kind of not with the procedures. It was nice to see that. I sent you back an email saying, um, thank you for that information. I'm more comfortable with the kite surfers. Doggy Beach, um, I'll just leave that. But the kite surfer one, I was, uh, I was quite comfortable with the fact that, and we have enough signage. And he explained, he gave us some, uh, chapter and verse of cases. So, um, it made me comfortable. Doggy Beach, Dan had done something. On Doggy Beach.
Why don't you go up here, Dan?
Yeah, if we could. I have it right here, but, thank you, Dan.
My pleasure. The long and short of it is, if we're gonna make a change to Doggy Beach, we need a bylaw to do that. Enzo and I spoke about this earlier. Currently, it's in the police portion of our bylaws. So note it, extricate it or change it, we need another bylaw, or at least a, a revision of the current bylaw.
Okay.
What are you saying, that, 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 I don't understand that. Well, we're gonna change, we're gonna change the kite surfing?
No, this is Doggy Beach, it has nothing to do with kite surfing.
Oh, the dogs.
Let's talk about the dogs first. The dogs, first of all, we've asked, Dan has asked, and I've asked the town clerk to find the town meeting that it was accepted at. And I don't believe we have, it, it's always been indefinitely postponed for Doggy Beach. Which tells me that I don't see how they can have a police bylaw without a town bylaw. It was never accepted at a town meeting to have a Doggy Beach. She's, she's gone through every town meeting. And she, she's still working on it, I mean, this, this, she's gone back to nineteen ninety-five, I think, and worked her way up. And I know Dan's been part of that, and it's always been indefinitely postponed. She has the minutes of every meeting. It was never accepted as a, as a Doggy Beach per se. I mean, what do we do, you know?
I think we need to play it safe. I mean, it's in the bylaws, it got there somehow, um, it doesn't appear, so even if there was a problem in the past or a snafu, we should play it safe and just make sure we have a time, a town meeting vote, so that there's no way it can be questioned.
Right, well, right now she's still working on it, so
Okay.
until she, until, um, finds it, then we, then we have to, we'll have to figure it out. And the original talk on that whole thing was, it was supposed to be from the Hart residence. Now, I know Scott has come up with some pretty good ideas, um, on how to remedy that. And, I mean, this is gonna be ongoing, I think, for a while, until, I mean, it's calmed down quite a bit now, because after Labor Day
Yeah.
it does down there, so we have some time to look at that, I think. As far as the kite surfers
Well, let's finish Doggy Beach.
Okay. So, I mean, we can't really do much with it right, right now, but we don't
Well, let me ask you this, Dan, can we put restrictions down there, the boss lucking? So the dogs are on leash, right now they're not leashed.
Well, the bylaw, I think specifically says they don't have to be leashed, so that would be in contravention
But that's the police bylaw.
Right, so it would be in contravention of that bylaw, so we'd be on rough ground doing that.
Bylaw, bylaw was never passed, I mean, I understand that.
Well
We don't
We don't know, we don't know, we're not quite sure how it got there.
She's gone through several, I mean, the, the minutes are, the books are pretty thick, so she's gone through, oh, she still can't find it.
It does seem to be a mystery. But, um, it's kinda hard to believe that we just sort of appear without a lot of discussion.
There was too much discussion, and I remember the town meeting. I remember it passed because we created Doggy Beach for the sole purpose of putting the twenty-four hour leash law in. This was when the whole thing started. We placed the restrictions on, and we put leash laws and, you know, all the playground, and it was finally passed, the twenty-four hour leash law. Although it passed except for, except for Doggy Beach. And I remember that. I forget what town meeting it was, but it was created.
Two thousand, ninety-nine
The problem is, we get out of town as usual because they're coming in from Swamp Scott Marblehead, they like, they like it. It's getting jammed down there, and they're running up on private property, and that's, it's become a problem. But, I mean, I, you know, I, I, I don't know. I like to see the unleashed dogs run on the golf course, chase the geese away. Anyways, go ahead, why don't you wait, we're gonna wait now, I guess.
Okay.
How about kite surf?
So it's an ongoing process, Richie, right now, the dogs.
Do you wait, do you find out?
You just kinda have to Right, whether, dig some more and, um, we'll find it, and if it's there, if it's there, if it's not, then
And town meeting's in the spring, so it would avoid the next issue
The gentleman that used to do the minutes for, um, the town meetings back then? Rebate him. Paul, uh, I forget his name, Paul, um, he's from the Cape. Everything was rebate, I mean, it was, they were perfect. I mean, he wrote every single word, every single person, everything else.
She's probably missed one of the special town meetings, that could have been a special town meeting for that, that dog.
I think she's gone through those too. So, she's, she's still plugging away at it, so she's got other things, you know?
Well, there is a bylaw, I was wondering how it got there. Yeah, we do have a bylaw, that's for sure, but the mystery is how it was generated.
Okay, now the kite surfing portion of it, if I may, on kite surfing? Dylan had, at the end of his email, I forgot that he had said that, said that he would come before us and recite the same chapter and verse and why the restricts, why the, he's, he and his people are buckling down on kite surfers. And he thinks the signage is good and he doesn't see us, um, well, he'll explain it. But if we could get him to come to the next meeting?
Sure.
If it'd be, because he can explain it much better than I can.
Yeah, I know, and I know Dylan pretty well. The only problem I have with it is, I mean, I wouldn't wanna put that on him.
No.
On his people, uh, you know, to, to be a guardian for all the kite surfers, um.
On his people, uh, you know, to, to be a guardian for all the kite surfers, um-
Well, I won't speak for him, but I know he has talked to people.
No, I know that, and I, and I, I can appreciate that. I think he's, he's, and he's, you know, a professional at it. Um, and unfortunately, he explained to me that the, the woman that got, unfortunately got hurt, really didn't know what she was doing, and, um, and she cut her kite loose, it came across and hit somebody. Um, and I know that you, I've asked you, Dan, if we, we, any, can we incur any liability out of that? And you say we can't, but it doesn't give us the, I mean, they can try.
They can, it would be very difficult for them to break through the insurance, the tort claims act, the recreational use statute. There's a lot of layers. Sure, is it possible? Sure. There's a slim possibility, but it's a pretty tough road.
Right. I just don't wanna see a, a driver going by also in a car. If that, if it happened to hit a car, then, you know, you, forget the money issue, it's, it's someone's life.
Sure.
Killed, you know, so, um, we need to look at all that. And put some safeguards in there somehow. Paul, Richie, if you have any input?
Yeah, I think we should ban kiteskiing on that Doggy Beach completely.
Okay.
You ban, you ban, uh, we never had an incident at the wharf, but we banned swimming down the wharf.
Yeah, but these, those are kids. These are adults.
No, I understand, I understand. Now, we've had major accidents down there where the, the kiteskiing, they're coming in younger, and that wind, when they start blowing, it blows them into the rocks. I mean, it's not beach down there like Glen Beach or even Coast Guard Beach. You know, they blow into the rocks and get hurt. And we've had two major, actually, at least three accidents down there, where individuals were blown over the, over the street, the highway, and that red fence by the playground saved them. That was the first one.
Yeah, I remember that.
That individual got really hurt bad. The next one was, I think, recent, there was another one down there, the same thing happened. There's three incidents where our fire police come down and had to rush them to the hospital. They had broken arms, broken legs, uh, things. I mean, I, I, I just, I, why take the liability? Why chance it? We should ban that down there. Because they're not, it's, and usually, when they go out kiteskiing, it's like when this wind come down the Cape this morning, and they go out. I saw them surfing at Tudor Beach today. I mean, it just, it, it's, it's blowing hard, it's rough seas, and they're coming over to that Doggy Beach to kite and, and, and fly, and they, and they, and they, if they get blown off course, they get plunged into the rocks. That's, that's like, hello? We shouldn't have the kite surfing down there at all. I mean, that's, that's my fear, and I think we should ban it. I just, why, why, I understand. I mean, they've got a whole beach down in Glen Beach to go do kite surfing. And if they get blown in, they, they land in the sea, you know? They get blown out, out to sea, we've got our firemen now trained and to go get them or something. I, I, I just, you know, enough, enough with the kite surfing.
Can we-
I mean, this is a recreational sport that is not the area to, to do it in, okay? It's nothing but a wall of rocks. I mean, and usually, when they're out there doing that kiteskiing, it's usually in bad weather. High winds, heavy surf, and more people are taking it out because they're younger. A lot of them don't know what to do with it.
Do we allow them to go, well, what about Short Beach now?
No, I, I, you know, Short Beach, again, I, I, I don't know. Short Beach is-
Is there something that we can?
Short Beach, we sh, we can't, because during the summer, I would, I would restrict them from May through into September. And other time, they can go down to Short Beach, they can use that. I have no problem with that. Again, it's a different tide. No, but, I mean, I, you know, it's like, we're encouraging, you know, you know, I'll fire the partner, police the partner. I mean, this is not, you know, I mean, we're creating this problem, and we're authorizing it for them to get, you know, and, and, and it's, it's like the wharf. You, you're taking precautions, but there were so many kids down here, you couldn't control it, so you shut it down. And no one got hurt, thank God. But this thing, we've got three incidents, major one, where people got hurt. And that ki, that, that kite that she was flying got loose and hit her bicycles on the causeway. I mean, he could've got killed.
And, well, I know, I don't, I don't-
He could've got killed because that kite flew in his face, and he could've went across the road, and someone hit him head-on. I mean, it's just a dangerous, dangerous thing. I don't think we should want it, and we can't make sure, because they're coming in by the drog. They're even packing up on our grass to unload all this equipment and stuff, and I, I just, I, I, I think it's, I think it's time we shut it down. I mean, they've got Glen Beach. I mean, how, how far is that? What's, what's the difference?
I, I don't disagree with it.
Yeah? I, I don't think we need it, because it's, it's too dangerous area to do, to do the skydiving, or kiteskiing, whatever they do.
Do we, how do we go about this?
Well, this is, this is a, a division between where the executive power of this board ends and the legislative power of town meeting begins. Where does that line come in? You have the power to manage our property, absolutely. Um, when you read the charter and things of that nature, it seems that that is more like repairing the buildings, cutting the grass, making decisions in terms of capital improvements. But when we're talking about, um, controlling people's conduct, that sort of bleeds more into sort of a town meeting thing. It's not clear. I'm gonna tell you right now, it's, it's very unclear. It's pretty gray. If you didn't wanna wait for a town meeting, I would suggest the best thing to do is to make sure that there is something specific on the agenda saying there will be a vote as to whether to curtail kite surfing on Doggy Beach. If you wanna be heard, you beat this meeting. Dylan and whomever his crew is can have a chance to be heard, and whomever else, perhaps that person that was heard with the, uh-
Who's the gonna come up, Dan? They're gonna come, oh, yeah, we want kiteskiing, there's the guy in Little Mahan, oh, yeah, we're gonna, you know.
Well, I don't know how many people from the hot actually-
How many, how many more people do you wanna get hurt down there? I mean, huh, I mean, I mean, what, I mean, we've got three, actually five people involved, and they were seriously injured. They weren't kinda just, you know, they, they banged their arm or something. These people were seriously injured.
Hmm.
Broken arms, concussions, I mean, let me tell ya. And the fire, our fire was good.
I think the girl was in the intensive care too.
Oh, she's still there. And, and, and she got blown into the rocks, and that bicycles, he survived. I mean, I don't know, he, that kite hit him right in the face, and he was on the right side. He could've got killed.
Yeah, he gets stiffed up.
I mean, and he got, he got banged up. He went over the stairwell. He went right over. They had to rush him to the hospital. I mean, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, we've identified the problem. I mean, it's not that we brought this on, it, they brought it on themselves. It's not something that we did. We were allowing them to do it, everything was fine, and then all these accidents happened. How many more people are gonna get hurt at Doggy Beach kite surfing? It's very simple. And then, and they're not from the hot, they're from out of town.
And the dog, the dog portion of it is, it's mostly from out of, I mean, so how do you, how do you remedy that? How do you say you can't?
The, the, the dog is separate. The dog is-
No, I understand that, but it's, it's-
But the kite surfing, I, there was no, that was never intended in that bylaw. It never, never came up. There was never discussion on that. Doggy Beach was created so the dogs could run on a beach where they were banned from all other beaches.
Mm-hmm.
No dogs allowed on any beaches at all, except for Doggy Beach. And now we're finding out there's so many dogs down there, and where are these people coming? They're coming from outside of town. And I, we have to straighten that with the bylaw, whatever we have to do. I mean, the town pe, the townspeople are not down, and the townspeople are the ones that are complaining with the dogs. Dogs getting bit, you know, I mean, it's like, how much resources do we have to, you know, we're giving people, you know, all this stuff.
All right, so how many, when's our next, when, when are we gonna meet again?
October fifth.
Okay, um, which is not really that far away.
When is it?
October fifth.
So let's, can we ta, I wanna table this, and I wanna get some more input from, uh, from Dan and from, um-
Dylan.
Dylan. And I, I would, I agree with, I do agree with you, Richie, on, on this, but, you know, I wanna, um, hear what they have to say, how, how we go about doing it, and how, how we go about just completely banning it, because it, it's just, it's added more, you're gonna add more stuff to the, to the police. I mean, they're gonna have to get down there and kick 'em out, and, um-
Well, you post it, and then, yeah, they have to enforce it. It's like everything else.
Right.
It's like po, the parking problem. If you enforce the towing, okay, the parking problem goes away.
Right.
If you don't, and, and you have to do it like for three or four weeks, okay? Same with them. You just, when they come across, it's some police cruiser, say, listen, where you going? I'm gonna go kiting. I can't, you can't.
We, we banned swimming off the wharf, and they still do it.
Well, you, 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 you know, we, the, they've been swimming off the wharf for as long as-
Right.
For seventy-five years. But it's, it's, the social media is the one, is the culprit, okay? And, you know, if there's twenty-five kids swimming off the wharf, they're all in the hot, I don't see a problem. We've been doing it for years. But when you add a hundred kids coming over with bikes and, you know, doing other things and-
Okay. Um, you agree that we table it till next time, T?
I was gonna say, yes, okay.
We'll table it till the next meeting, both, both issues. Um, I do wanna talk about Doggy Beach, where, um, I, I think, uh, the dog officer has come up with an idea that it would be for the hot people, and they'd have a vest, they'd buy a vest, and, you know, certain color vest, and they're down there walking their dogs, and they have to have a vest on. If they don't have a vest on, they're not from the hot. I mean, we can restrict it to the hot dogs. And I understand, the police chief is, I've already talked to him about this, and the deal was, you know, well, you can't, it's a public beach, but it's a public beach for humans, not for dogs. I mean, we can restrict dogs.
Yeah, there is, that's not without precedent. There are some beaches down, um, I wanna say in the vineyard, that are restricted to town residents. Now, they're pretty unique circumstances, but it is true, and we're not doing that. I'm not suggesting that. Um, but to the extent that that's even possible, to limit it to the hot dogs, I think is even less, if you will, a stretch. I think enforcement might be an issue, but that's another thing.
Okay, so next, uh, in favor, that's the next, next meeting.
Um, I, I might add that it's, it's almost ten o'clock now, um, and we're only halfway through the agenda. None of the rest of this is time-sensitive.
Right.
So what I may suggest is we move this to October fifth.
Yes.
Yep.
Do you, do you agree?
Since we're on two F.
Yeah.
We're on two F, and we have to go to four F.
Right.
We have a lot more to do, we have a lot more to go.
Let's go, let's keep going and get it done. Well, we can get, well, vote, vote the approved events request, okay? Get all that done.
Yeah.
We can do the-
We'll take that request.
Yep, sure.
Great. Do you want me to whip through? We have the Women's Club Holiday Fair on eleven twenty-five, and you have a motion on that. That's three C.
Three C?
Yep.
Thank you, Dan.
I move.
Thank you, Dan.
I, I approve it.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great. We now have the Northeast Masters Presentation that'll be here in Town Hall on twelve eight.
Okay. I move, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the Annual Freezing for a Reason on January first, and that's at Short Beach at eleven AM.
I so moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then finally, on the October twenty-ninth, we have a Mount Washington Lecture that's here in the main room of town.
I so moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, one thing I wanna ask, uh, since we are having an event in the hot now, we're having a, a movie shoot?
Yes.
Okay, um, we, we approved, um, the fire chief asked, well, demanded that we have a, a, a fire detail for the Havana Knights, and the Fire Union kindly bought four tickets to compensate back, you know, the fire detail. They're blocking off the road down there. Why, why don't we have a fire detail down there?
What they looked for was just a police detail, so police would just make sure there's access. There's so, so limited, um, property down there, uh, at the, at the area that they're in especially, you have other accesses to those homes, so, uh, fire-
Ambulance, ambulance, I couldn't get down there. I mean, I couldn't even get down there, and I'm on the board, well, I'm on the board of Selectmen, so I would ask that we have a fire detail down there.
In situations like that in the future?
Well, are they done?
They're done. Yeah, today's, today they were done, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, if he's gonna, gonna ask for to have a fire detail for the, uh, something like that, I, I would think that we'd need a fire detail for all of it.
We'll take a look at that in future activities similar to that.
Okay, so we're gonna finish up the next, uh, at the next meeting. We have some other stuff to go through. Let's solve a new business. Uh, town vehicles warrants, opening position for the public works, the geese problems, the public works line cutting, and winter